Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the Planning Board meeting of July 23rd, 2025. First on the agenda for a public hearing is Carmel Residential, 119 Seminary Hill Road. Since there's no comments from the consultants, anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Please come up and state your name. And your address, please.
My name is Leslie Klein, I live on Mechanic Street. And these condos will be right behind my house. There's condos right in front of my house. It's single-family dwellings. I understand it's supposed to be senior condos, and we are surrounded by senior condos. The ones on Seminary Hill or Panken Drive haven't even sold all because they're not sellable. And I just think that it's just too much for our neighborhood. Just not a good fit for a single-family home development that keeps getting dumped on. Just my opinion.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Yes.
Do you state your name and address?
Okay. Eleanor Lobanik. And I'm at 157 Seminary Hill Road. Here, I got my tax map. So this complex is going to go kind of up the mountain and behind me. And I had some concerns. I went over all the material that I saw in the files, and so my water and wastewater questions were answered, that's good. My main concern now is that the ingress egress is going out onto Seminary Hill Road on a curve. And it's very dangerous out there to begin with. There's a tremendous amount of traffic, increased traffic. I've lived there for 13 years now. There's been no less than 15 cars popping tires on the rocks on the side of the road. They end up in my driveway. We fix it, but you know, nothing's being done about that. I'm not sure it could be, because these are glacial rocks, they're not going anywhere. Point being, the road is very narrow. And now we're gonna dump more cars out onto it. And people are speeding. And as far as I can tell, there is no policing of this speeding. Everyone in America knows that town and village roads are 30 miles an hour, that's a standard. I did go to the highway department when Mike was there, and I asked for more signage. He said, "Roads get one at the beginning and one at the end, that's it." Well, Seminary Hill Road is a connector between Mayopac and Carmel, it's very long. And if more signs will help, I'd like to see that. I'd like to see the police, I mean, they could sit right at Camarda Park and catch, like, their quota every day. It's unbelievable. The times that this happens is rush hours, going onto 684, coming back from 684. Clearly, people are going on West Shore Drive and then coming on Seminary. I have buses going by every day, you know, all the vehicles, the town vehicles, for heaven's sake. It's a very, very well-traveled road, and I can't see how it can bear this ingress and egress. So I would like that to be addressed. Also, in all of the paperwork that I was looking at, I did not see a traffic analysis. Has that happened yet? Anybody know?
We'll answer that. We will answer, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get that when Zach does an overview.
Okay.
Eleanor, you mentioned these tires getting blown out on that road, is that from existing rock that's on the side of the road?
Yes, yes. And I mean, it can be because somebody's looking at their cellphone or speeding. Just two weeks ago, I had an elderly couple, the RoboTies, and you know, they, they put, the senior center put bingo on Wednesdays up at Camarda Park, which is delightful, that's a great use of the pavilion. However, these people are coming out of there, and you know, it's a very windy, narrow, scary road, and they popped their tires. And I had to put them in the shade, it was 90 billion degrees out, and you know, bring them ice water and watermelon, and we called AAA and everything, but this happens regularly. I'm not exaggerating. Fifteen. You know what? Dan O'Brien down the street comes with his hydraulic jack and has helped, you know, several of these instances. Some of them have had to be towed away. I have called the police to, you know, if it's at night, so that they can make sure that nobody crashes into the vehicle that's damaged.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else from the audience wish to be heard tonight? Zach, I think you ought to give us an overview of the project, maybe.
Yeah, just, I'll give the board an update on some of the things we talked about last meeting.
Speak a little bit more into the microphone.
Yeah, just an update on some of the things we talked about at the last meeting.
And for the audience, go back a little bit further to...
Yep, yeah, we'll start at the beginning. So again, it's a three-lot subdivision, five lots to three lots. One of the lots is proposed to have 39 townhouse units on it. They're not age-restricted, they're not proposed to be age-restricted.
Which means buses won't be going in there.
Yeah, right, it's not gonna be town road, it's gonna be private, private road. So we've went back and forth with the board a few times about what that's gonna be. So it's a private road. Access off of Seminary Hill Road, there was a traffic report included in the EAF, the expanded EAF submitted. That's been submitted back and forth to the Towns Consulting Traffic Engineer. The applicant's traffic engineer just responded last week to the final comments, which were almost, I'm sure the board saw those, there wasn't too much left relative to the traffic study, the impact to the roads, what was gonna be done at the entrance, things like that, that was all, all in that document. She, absolutely correct, there's water and sewer connections to the existing municipal systems in Seminary Hill Road. Water will be looped through the site, connecting Seminary Hill Road to the existing line that comes up Carl Court off of Mechanic Street, so there'll be a redundancy there for the town system. That's been reviewed by the Towns Consultant. Sewer, since the last time we saw you guys in, was that May, I believe, the consulting engineers reviewed the sewer, and we've satisfied all of his outstanding comments to date. Again, this, this, this application started as a 50, it was either 50 or 55, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was 55 units. It was further up to the top of the hill. Again, we worked with the board back and forth to, to study the view sheds and, and pull the applicant, or pull the development back off the top of the hill, leaving the top of that property undeveloped with trees, a walking trail as part of, you know, some of the onsite amenities, but that's kind of the history of, of where we, you know, have gone with you guys through the process to date.
So are you saying...
Well, I'm sorry, you'll need to come up to, and you can do that, you come up to the microphone.
I...
The people, especially on TV, won't hear you.
Are you saying that the Town Traffic Engineer approved it?
The final comments were responded to the beginning of last week. So what was left was, we had to do is some traffic impact study, and it had to do, I think that was actually the only thing. He had a couple of questions about onsite things that we've worked through with the board that we responded to, but we've worked through every one of his comments to date.
Rich, do you have any comments for tonight for the water and sewer?
No, Zach Ked is on that, we've reviewed it, it went through the consultants, it's meeting what we've required. So no, no additional comments.
Thank you.
So what was, what was the outcome of the traffic study? That's what I'm asking you.
Oh, I thought you were talking about water and sewer.
No, traffic.
Okay. Water, traffic?
They've submitted a traffic study, it was given to our traffic engineer, which is an onsite consultant, the comments have come back, I think Zach has been addressing them. So there is a traffic study within that whole documentation, it's part of the, I guess, the long EAF or the, whatever the environmental impact statement was, there is a traffic study in there.
And how can I see this?
It's a public document, and they've been making changes to a number of elements of the plan as a result of the traffic study and their review. So there's been mitigation measures that have been ongoing.
This has been...
So the traffic study isn't, to answer your question, sorry, Mr. Chairman, the traffic study isn't completed yet, it's part of the project right now, it's in the documentation, it's still a living, breathing document, because comments are still being researched by our consultant and being addressed by the applicant, but you're more than welcome to come and look at that file. It should have already been in any of the documentation you've looked at already, but you, you've become and speak to Rose, she should be able to provide you the most updated version of it.
Please restate your name and address the board.
Leslie Klein. So, another question, so you're saying that you had five lots that were reduced to three lots, combined into three lots. There used to be acre moratoriums on building, so you're putting 39 units on three building lots in a residential area, single-family homes. That, again, you kind of crammed those condos on Panken Drive down our throats, now you're doing more in a residential, windy road. It just, it's just really unbearable. It's almost like you're squeezing people who've lived there for 40 years, 45 years, out, because they moved here because they liked the residential, they liked the acres, they liked the space between homes, and now, like, right in my backyard is gonna be this. And I don't care what the plan is, I don't care if they're beautiful, it's just really, it's not right. I mean, they're not in your backyard, they're not in your backyard, they're not in your backyard, they're in my backyard. And it's just not right.
Can you point on the map where your home is? Point on the map where your home is?
Okay, so this is Seminary Hill right here?
No.
Where's Seminary Hill?
Zach, grab the microphone, please.
Seminary Hill's here, it's Mechanic Street. Where's Mechanic Street? So Mechanic Street, this is me, right there. So, yes, I can't see them through the woods, but it's right, it's right behind my house. And my neighbor, it's right behind his house. My neighbor over here, it's right between, right behind her house. I mean, Carl, Carl owns this street over here, Albano Ridge Lane, or whatever it's called, right. But I mean, is he gonna see it? No, it's not in his backyard. It's not in his backyard.
Those two houses are Carl's house, right here.
But it's not in his backyard.
That is, is directly in his backyard.
But it's not his backyard, I'm telling you, it's not his backyard. You have all this, it's not his backyard.
All right, Zach, please respond to the lotage, the reduction in lots and...
Yeah, so, so...
From the home to the property line, how, how many hundreds of feet is it?
From whose, from her home?
My property.
That's 100 feet. Two, three.
So I would actually...
500 feet, 400 to 500 feet, to, to this property, to this property line here. Again, these two lots are part of the subdivision, these are gonna stay, single-family home, residential, this lot.
Because he lives there, that's why, he lives there, let him put it over here, put it over here.
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be, wouldn't that, wouldn't that be closer to your house?
Listen, listen...
That's like three halves of his street.
Ma'am, 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 you have to address the board. We can't be speaking like that, you gotta speak to the board, you gotta use the microphone, because the TV...
Okay, sorry. Well, I don't understand why Carl doesn't put it on his street. Have Carl put it here, between his daughter's house and his house. See how he likes it. That way he'll look at it every day. I'm sorry, it's just annoying. I mean, I pay a lot of money in taxes, I moved to Carmel 45 years ago, we like the fact that it's private, we have a lot of room between, then they went to three-acre moratoriums, they, like I said, they put those condos over there, they're not even sold. Now he wants to put these in, it's traffic, it's sewer, it's, I mean, as soon as they put the sewer in, it just opened up like a floodgate. And it's just not right for the people who lived here and moved here for that reason.
So this...
Zach, also please address Lesi's early on statement about the change in lots from five to three and how that all works out.
Yes, so it's, it's five lots currently, five residential lots, it's gonna be subdivided to three lots. Two lots will remain, single-family home residential on the two houses that are out there. The third lot will be developed with the 39 units. And, and again, this is code conforming, there's no, you know, this meets current code for Carmel, so there's, you know...
And this is a reduction from the original?
Well, yeah, we, again, we were before you guys with 50, 50 units, we're down to 39 units.
Right, which, talking with the board, reduce that down to lower the elevation of the house.
Bring the elevation down, get off the top of the hill, get it below the view, view shed, you know, the analysis that we provided to, to the board early on.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Carl Albano, I figure I should at least say hello and speak a little bit to this. I've been there for many, many years. Over the years, the zoning changed so many times. On one side of the street, I did a small development, it was half-acre zone. I came to the Town Board and said, you know, you have half-acre on this side, acre and a half on the other side of the street. And the answer I got was that, we're gonna fix the zoning, we're gonna have a new plan. Then we ended up with three acres across the street from the half-acre lots. In a normal world, if we had one-acre lots, even acre and a half, I would have built single-family homes. The project, you know, putting in a road is very expensive. I live there, I'm not moving, my, my daughter lives there. I had to figure out something with this land, what can I do? Because I, I'm gonna be 70 years old this year, and I'm getting tired, I don't wanna build no more. And there seems there's a big need for housing in this price range. On the corner, they put, I don't know, 40, 50 units on seven acres. I'm proposing 39 on around 20 acres. As far as where the road comes in, I thought it would be better to take traffic off of Mechanic Street. You already have a condominium complex there, a group home, there's a lot of traffic on Mechanic Street. Seminary Hill seemed to be the logical place to come in, even with the elevations of the land. So, I mean, I think, if you look at the code, you could put 100 units on here. It may not work, but that's what the code says. My dream was to build on the top of the mountain, because I think that's the most beautiful part of the mountain. But again, to be conservative, to make it work, we stepped it down, we were even willing to lower the top of the mountain 20 feet. Somebody mentioned you might still see it, it might stick a foot over the top of the other condos. I think this is a reasonable project on a big piece of property. And yes, they are right in my backyard, I'll be looking at them. And like I said, I plan on staying there, again, my daughter's there, I'm not going anywhere. The other lots, the other Albano Ridge, that road, probably wouldn't be conducive to work with this development. You know, we're going through a wet area, it's established, it's in, but it made a lot of sense. And now you'll have two ways in and out of this project in case of fire or any emergency. It makes a lot of sense, looping the water system, having access to two different roads if there is an emergency. And again, Mechanic Street, I thought, had enough traffic, so I thought that was the logical spot to go.
Thank you, call.
Thank you. And if any of the neighbors have questions, they could call me, I'd be glad to speak to them.
Anyone else? Please state your name, address the board.
Hi, my name is, sorry, my name is Matt Tetter, I'm a neighbor of you, right down Seminary Hill Road. It doesn't have an address, but it's Rock Road property, north and south, it's a...
Can't hear you.
My name's Matt, hi. I, I'm a neighbor to the south on Rock Road, which is, you know, a bit further south on Seminary Hill Road. I, either I missed it, or it wasn't there, but does the existing sewer connection on Seminary Hill Road get extended further south for this? That's my only question.
It does not, we're connecting to the existing sewer in front of the property.
Anyone else from the public? Joe, Mike, Rich, Pat, any, any comments from... All right, I think we need to, to chew on this a little bit, discuss this with the We'll need a motion to close the public hearing. No, we're gonna leave it open, we're gonna leave it open till we have some more time. We need to leave it open, actually, because...
Well, I can, if you, we'd be willing to waive the approval period for you guys.
Oh, okay, yeah, we need some time.
We, we talked about it at the last meeting, we have, we've gotta get to a point where the board is comfortable to issue the neg deck for us to move forward with the outside agencies and, and work through, you know, comments that we could be getting from the D E P on stormwater and those type of things. We understand that this is a step in the process, and we're more than willing to waive the 45 days.
Thanks, Zach, that's, that's what we need, that's, that's the right way to do this project.
Maybe we could get a note for the file that says that.
I will send you guys a letter, absolutely.
Thank you, Zach.
Yep.
Thank you, the neighbors who spoke.
So the public hearing is gonna remain open?
Yeah.
Okay. You have time to look at the traffic study once it's finalized, because that's a document that's in flux right now?
I thought you were talking about closing it, and I would write the letter to extend the period after the closing of the public hearing.
We're gonna leave it open. There's, there's some homework to do here, and the neighbors burped the falcons, we have to give them time to look into this. I'm sorry?
I don't need a letter, I don't need to write you guys a letter.
If you're leaving it open, it's okay, we don't need the letter.
Yeah, yeah, we don't need it at all. Look, to be honest with you, it's July, I know there's other neighbors that wanted to come out, it's the right thing to do to give other neighbors opportunity in August. And there's some homework that the neighbors have to do and we have to do. It's a big project, so...
One, one thing I'd like, as long as it's remaining open, is it possible to get the traffic study to specifically address the issues that have been raised tonight?
Most of those have been addressed in the study.
But in light of the comments.
We'll, we'll pass the comments along to our consultant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, thank you.
In the future, for projects of this scale, should we look at possibly including like a developer fee for road improvements? In the future, not?
I'm sorry, can I...
For future projects of something like this scale, would it be in our best interest to include like a developer fee for road improvements?
So, right now, if there's an impact as a result of the project, it's the applicant's obligation to mitigate whatever their impact they're creating. Generalized impacts would be something that, Nick, that's what we're referring to, a development impact fee, that's more generalized and not specific. We'd have to have legislation for that, it would be something we would have to talk to the Town Board about.
But we, we have had, where roads have been fixed, right, the RPK, which is right down the block, there was a realignment of the road to make that work. So if the traffic study comes back, the board can make that request through either the traffic consultant or any of the three of us, four of us, but Joe, sorry, and, and we would be able to say, okay, do that, right? So...
And you know, Nick, we've done that with sewer, we've done that with water, off-site improvements, so it's, it's...
Zach, I think this was originally 55 units, down to 39.
Yep, it was.
And I, I personally like, I agree with the call, it would be nice up on top of the hill. But bringing it down and reducing the units is probably a good thing, considering the water and the sewer and traffic and everything else, so...
And the visual for the community.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we've made some improvements.
Yeah, we're happy to work with the board on that, I thought we did a bunch of good work there with you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Veolia North America, Archer Wells, 9 Colton Road.
Good evening, my name is Muhammad Al Ghandi. Pifas, my name is Muhammad Al Ghandi, Engineering Associate at Veolia North America, Pifas Program, and I'm here for the resolution for the Archer Wells.
Okay. Mike, any comments?
All my comments have been addressed.
And Rich?
Same here, it's on for resolution.
And Pat, the same thing, right?
Same here, and you have a resolution that included those last comments you had at the last meeting about the landscaping and the screening?
Yeah.
It's included in the resolution.
This has been around for a while, right, we, we've made a lot of nice improvements on this. I think, yeah, it's a nice job with everything we've asked for, from noise to sound. Do we have a motion to adopt the site plan?
So Chairman, I'll make a motion, a resolution of the Planning Board of the Town of Carmel, number 25-22, July 23, 2025. Tax map number 85.12-1-8, Veolia North America, Archer Wells, final site plan approval.
Second. Well, in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda, agenda is Raymond Hill Cemetery, 165 Route 6, site plan. Mike, is Joel setting up, would you like to read in your comments, please?
Yeah, they proposed to add a 16 by 24, one bay garage to an existing garage on the site. Cemeteries are not a permitted use in this zone, but it's not an expansion of the use, so a variance is not required, use variance. The lot depth and lot width lines have to be shifted, I explained it to Joel, he's gonna do it, it does comply, it's just in the wrong spot on the, on the plat. Avarance is required for front yard, 40 feet's required, 13.9 proposed, and 26.1 for variances needed.
Thank you. Rich?
Referral to the Carmel Fire Department for this new structure, maybe New York State D E C for stormwater, it's unclear of the area disturbance if it's above or below any of the thresholds for the general permit. They may have to supply a stormwater maintenance agreement, or public improvements would have to be deemed for a performance bond and engineering fee. There are no details for stabilized construction entrance or erosion incentive control, that needs to be added to the drawing. If any fill is being brought, it should be provided, it should, must be New York State D E C certified, and how is drainage from the new building and driveway will be routed should be provided on the drawing.
Thank you. Pat?
So, three quick things on this, so if you've gone out and looked at it, the garage is proposed next to the existing garage, and then there's a little retaining wall, and then there's graves right there, that look like they're pretty close to where the garage would be, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that I want a garage on top of Mom's grave. So, is it separated, what's the distance, it, it looks pretty close, Joel, so if you could clarify that. There is a railroad tie retaining wall, so there is a little bit of change of grade, so as Rich mentioned, is there fill, how are you dealing with the grade change?
Which wall, which wall are you talking about?
There's a two-tier wooden retaining wall.
Yes.
That's where the garage would be, so there's an 18-inch change of elevation?
Yes.
So is there grading, are you building a wall, how are you dealing with that change of grade?
No, that, the garage will not go past that wall, it'll be before the wall.
Then if, if that's the case, the wall's fallen down, so you may have to repair that one.
Well, if it has to be repaired, we'll repair it, of course.
And the la, oh, the last thing is, so the, the office building, clavering building looks fine, and there's this sort of stucco garage, and then this new garage, which is, Joel is showing, is a clavering building. Can you put some clavering on the, in the, that intermediate garage so that there's a consistent streetscape?
Absolutely, thank you, yes.
I think that would make it look nice. And it looks, it's not sloppy for a maintenance yard, it's pretty, it's in good condition, so it's not as though it's a problem, but it would, as an architectural board, it would, it would clean up that back portion.
Yeah, thank you very much, I think that's a good idea, and I will pass it along to the people involved. As far as the drainage and everything else, basically, it's just a, an addition, and obviously the gutters will come down to, to splash blocks, and that's, that's pretty normal. As far as the, the building is concerned, it's, it's just basically additional storage for the, for the, for the cemetery, and as Michael said, there's no change in the cemetery itself, and that's gonna remain as is.
Just provide the details on the drawing, where's the runoff going, are there gutters, where's it heading to, any fill, any grading, just provide that. Erosion incentive control during construction, that's standard stuff, should be on the drawing. And the details should be there.
What was the last thing you said? I'm sorry? What was the last thing you said?
Erosion incentive control, it's standard for drawings, none of it was provided.
Well, again, this is not a, this is not a working drawing, this is a presentation to the board.
And again, Joel, with respect to the gravestones, but which way are the feet, kind of thing, so it's, it's close.
Specifically, how far are the gravestones from this building?
They're probably about 15 feet away.
There are gravestones in front of the building as well, do you have enough space to get in and out of the garage there?
There are no headstones in front of that.
Well, the driveway kind of turns in before the building there.
Joel, I don't know if the drawing matches up to reality.
What's that?
I don't know that the drawing matches up to reality, when you go out there, it just raises the question, so to next point, if you could clarify that with some dimensions, that would help.
Okay, no problem.
Plus a construction sequence, how are you gonna do it, that addresses, yeah, Mr. Pelzano's question.
Okay, we'd like to be, if you could pass this along to the zoning board, as Michael said, there's one variance that's required.
There are so many things I wanna... I, when you pull in there, there'll be, what, three buildings now with the garage, or four, right? Three buildings, right? I would think as a business owner, you'd want a little bit more of an impact that, wow, this is nice. I'm concerned with, we haven't seen any, any drawing, any building layouts of the garage, what materials are gonna be used, colors.
Isn't that what is required when we come back for a final?
Well, I think there's a lot that lacks now before going to the architectural review board, in my opinion, and I'd like to hear from others. You know, we also, are the architectural review board, and Pat hit on, I'd just like to go a little bit further with it. I think they should be symmetrical, I think the buildings ought to look alike, maybe the same finishes, maybe the same colors. It should give you, as an owner of the business, I would like someone to pull in there and say, wow, this is a nice place for mom and dad, or whomever, whatever the case is. And I'm afraid we just put up a, I don't think it's haphazard, garage, nothing's gonna match, nothing's gonna flow, and we're gonna be stuck with an eyesore from a major roadway in our town. And Joel, you'll know, you've heard it from me several times, every meeting, that I say, look, I want this place to look nice, we gotta take all these small projects. And when we leave the project, it's gotta look nicer tomorrow than it did yesterday. And I don't think we're doing that with this right now, not with what I've seen, what's been submitted. Is it gonna be a blue building, a gray building, a green building, white building, I don't know.
Maybe some landscaping?
Landscaping should be part of that.
And I think it's worth mentioning, it's not only when you drive into the cemetery, when you approach south on Route 6, you're seeing these two buildings up in the corner on the right, so now there's just gonna be another long building next to it. Again, architecturally, is there something we can do?
And I think, Joel, we, as a board, we as a board have pretty much consistently not sent things off to other boards until we're satisfied that we have a good project, and then we've referred it off. So I think in that regard, we're pretty consistent, and I think that, to build on the chairman's statements, we need to really get our hands wrapped around this project before we do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
I understand the need, I'm sure they could use two garages as a floor maintenance. I'm not against the project, I'm against not knowing enough about the project.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Degetis Perry, 112 Bartolo Road. Mike, you had some comments, I believe?
I'm working off my phone, so my computer's not working. They proposed a 60 by 40 two-bay garage contractor establishment to an existing one-family dwelling in a CB zoning district. Use variance is required for the mixed use in the CB zone, lot depth and width lines are incorrect. I'd like to meet with Jack, I could go over with him and show him how to make it right. V variance is required for lot area, width and depth are to be determined. Side yard for the house, side yard for the garage, and rear yard for the garage. That's it.
Thank you. Rich?
So similar comments that I have for the prior application, Mayapac Fire Department would be a referral that might be in need to town of Carmel highway permit. Amazingly so, the disturbance is 4,975 square feet, which is 25 square feet lower than the threshold needed for the New York State DEC stormwater permit. I will be out there measuring, Jack, just so you know. Drawing doesn't show any details for stabilized construction entrance or sediment control measures, they must be provided. If any fill's being brought, have it there, must be certified, you know, New York State DEC regulations. And how is the drainage from the new building being routed, where is it being routed to? So, similar comments in these past two.
Pat?
And really, just two comments from me, Mr. Chairman, just understanding what the garage is going to be used for. If it's an actively used business operation, if they muster people there for work in the morning and there's employees coming there. Understanding how the building's going to be used as a business operation on a single-family home is important for us to understand. And just one technical issue, as you come in the driveway, that's where the two parking spaces are for the home, and then the driveway would continue to the garage in the back. So what if the homeowners park their cars there, how do the construction vehicles or whatever is being stored there maneuver? I don't know if there's space to maneuver around that, so that's really two things, they're just clarifications.
Jack, there's a lot happening in that area, we're already familiar with this industrial area. Why don't you give us an overview of what's, what they're wanting to do besides just the garage?
The owner is here, Mr. Degasperi, and it's right next to John Lemmons', his big project.
Can you speak up, please?
I mean, it's a...
Speak up, please.
Okay, and he's building a garage for his personal business, not for, you know, people coming in. As far as a stabilized construction entrance, I can show that, but we're just extending the driveway to the rear, and the main driveway will serve as the construction entrance. Do you guys have written comments for this? Oh, good, all right, this is the first time, this has been before the board, and we appreciate your comments.
So, Jack, let me ask you, do you have any comments on this?
The only comment I had was, who's gonna use it? Yeah, it's personal, so that...
What did he say?
I'm wondering how we were gonna use it and who was gonna use it, with no turnout off the driveway, but it's...
I'll have the owner come up and...
No, no, I get it, single owner occupied, it's his business.
Yeah, he can explain exactly what he's gonna do.
And Jack, you could do a stabilization at the, where it transfers to the driveway, just to get the dirt off before you get out to the road, I mean, it's pretty simple.
My name's Chris Degasperi, pretty much use as my shop for my supplies, my inventory. Set up daily, you know, I do a lot of service work too, so I keep a lot of inventory in-house, and I have a lot of, right now, I work out of shed structures. So I'm trying to get rid of those, I could hopefully have a building on the, you know, everything on the one roof right now. Just get rid of, in hopes I get this garage, I'll get rid of the sheds I have, take them down, and just try to clean up the property. You know, we've been working out there since 1980, pretty much run a plumbing and heating company out of there. So nothing's really changing as far as the daily activity we do out of there. You know, it's worked for us, you know.
Yeah, Chris, so that's the question, so by building the garage, you're not expanding the business and adding 50 employees or anything?
No, 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 just trying to make my life easier, you know, for my crew.
Do you live there, or...
Yes.
And you're taking down buildings, so Jack, just show what buildings are being removed, I don't remember if they're on the drawing or not, but if they are on the drawing, then we're good, if not, show what's being taken down, what's being put in place of it.
I think there's two drawings, two built little sheds that are coming out, and we've labeled them that they're to be removed.
It's in the same spot where the garage is, right?
Yeah, kinda, yeah, and yes. Can we get a referral to the zoning board for the variance?
We'll still ask some questions, let's just see where this pans out at.
Okay.
Is this property on septic or sewer?
It's on septic.
Where's your septic field?
Septic's in the back.
Where is it in relation to the garage?
The septic is in the rear yard, it's, it's a certain, the proper distance from that building, which is gonna be a slab on grade, and there's no bathroom in the building. So, we're not doing anything with the septic, and it's...
Jack, it's between the garage and the building, could you point it out for Nick?
Use the microphone.
And label it too, on the plan. Is it labeled, Jack?
Jack, you need this microphone, sorry.
I know you're doing it, Jack.
I know, okay, I'm sorry. Lost my head. What we're doing, the septic is right here, the existing building is here, the garage is, the proposed garage is here, and this is the extension of the driveway into the... Pat talked about parking, but they're not gonna park stuff outside, it's gonna be in the building, and it's all his own stuff.
Will it be water, waste, and electricity in the new building?
There'll be electricity, but, but there's no water, there's no bathroom.
What is the height of the new structure?
There is one thing, there's an outside hose bin, right? Yeah, and there's a, there's a water line that goes to the shed, but that's gonna be eliminated partially and just connected to an outside hose bin.
Jack, what's the height of the new structure?
What's the height, you think? Yeah, we'll have architecturals for that.
So I guess what I'm really asking is, is the new structure gonna be higher than the existing residence?
No, probably not, because the grade slopes off, so if you're looking at the road, this building, I can, I can get a, an architectural...
We gotta see renders, yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna look over the top of that building, and then, you know, Lemmons' has got stuff all along here, so... And there is a residential house, I believe, here, or is that where is this property here, Cosby's property? Yeah, right there, so Ben Cosby has a commercial building also, so it fits into the, that area.
Show those on the drawing then, Jack, right, I mean, so, at least now, or formally, if that's not next to it, right, it should be on there. Are there gonna be lights on that building?
Yeah, yes.
All right, so Mike, Jack, details, lighting spill plan, details of where the light's gonna be. Your drawing says that you're disconnecting an existing water line, but you're connecting it to a hose bin, from where, from the main house?
The main house has a water line that goes from here to the shed, and I'm showing that it's being eliminated inside this building. And we'll have a hose bin outside, I'll show some lighting, and I'll do a larger scale drawing that shows the existing buildings, but...
Are there gonna be any visual impacts from people, so again, that's, I think the board would ask that question next.
The only visual impact is...
You're putting up a garage, you know, that we had an issue with somebody putting a garage up for a similar situation on Myrtle. And, you know, I mean, when the public hearing was out there, they're like, I gotta see this, so...
But the building is behind this house.
It's to the right of it, you said Lemmons is on one side, so...
That's Lemmons's property.
It's all commercial warehousing.
Lemmons's property goes behind this building, and then Ben Cosby's property is way over here.
Let's just talk about this property, though.
I'll show them on a larger scale plan.
So, Chris, I, we played a role of the architectural review board also. I know it's an industrial area, I know it's gonna be in the back, but we wanna see what the garage looks like. We wanna see a rendering, is it gonna be a pink building, is it gonna be a green building?
Color samples.
What kind of material are you gonna use?
Didn't I send a rendering to you, Rich?
It came out really bad.
Of the building?
There was draw, there was pictures, it's not quite a rendering, it looks barn-like.
That's a rendering. Yeah, barn-like is right, but it's...
A little more detail. Look, I'm not looking for you, I'm not looking for you to give us renderings of a garage you built for your house, I understand where this is, but we gotta see what it looks like.
All right, I'll give a cross-section back through the building, back through the, and see where it comes out, yeah, that's fine. And I'll talk to Rose about your comment letters, right?
And everybody, we all had comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is gonna be an engineered building?
It is.
Yes, okay.
Okay, I'm staying here, 'cause I got the next one.
Oh, okay.
That extension.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
I brought this plan just in case, I mean, it's an extension of an approved...
Let me open it up, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Next on the agenda is the Frye subdivision, 79 Secor Road, extension of final subdivision. Mike, any comments?
Just that the zoning change in there, but because it was already approved, they are fine.
Okay, Rich?
No objection to the extension of this final subdivision plan, as long as no changes to the site are being made. Jack, just provide me a list of the permits that have been granted and associated expiration dates, so we have that on file.
Permits that have been granted by who?
Wherever permits, you have Putnam County DOH, you have Highway, you have State, you have whatever. Whatever permits have been blessed and given for this project, give a list with the date of expiration.
This project is already approved for a driveway, it's a subdivision, but, and with an existing house. And the reason we didn't get this done quickly is that we're jammed up with the health department, because they wanna see us to prove out an expansion area for the existing house. So what you approved before, the driveway, is...
Jack, just a list with expiration dates, you're fine after that.
Okay.
Yeah, just say driveway permit, no expiration date, or 2026, whatever it is.
We never submitted for a driveway permit.
Okay, then whatever you do have approval for.
Did you, you go to DEP on this? No, right, there was no DEP approval? Was there a stormwater permit for the state, yes, you had to get that?
Yes, but we didn't do, we didn't file that yet, because the subdivision wasn't done and approved by the health department.
Do you have a health department approvals?
No, because it sat there for months.
So make that list without any approvals, but let's have it so it's a matter of record.
Okay, that's fine, all right. We're good?
I don't know if we're good, I thought we would've been, but it seems like there might be several things open for Rich's needs.
No, no, that's not necessary.
No need to hold it for that.
No, no need to hold it, they just, he has to provide a list, it's a very simple thing to do, I don't know why he's fighting it, but he has to just provide a list, right? So...
I'm gonna fight him.
Yeah, you're a little bit. So, so in the grand scheme of things, right, he's good, he can get his extension, we've approved it, we're good with it, he just needs to follow through on those things.
I would appreciate your extension.
And Pat, any comments from you?
No, again, it was, the health department was really his holdup.
Yeah, and we've had problems with that before, that kind of falls in sync with a lot of our work this year.
Yeah, and the owner had to pay a significant fee to extend this permit, but we appreciate it.
This has been around for a while, too.
Yeah, we appreciate you extending it.
Relatively simple project. We have a motion to grant final subdivision approval for 180 days.
So I'll make a motion to grant an extension of the final subdivision approval for 180 days.
Zach? All in favor? Thank you, Jack.
Thank you very much.
He's very aggressive.
Next on the agenda is Western Bluff subdivision, 350 West Shore Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mike, I don't believe you had any comments, correct?
I do not.
Rich?
No objection, final subdivision plan, as long as there's no changes being made to the site. The applicant in this case has provided a list of permits that have been granted and associated expiration dates, and everything is good, so...
And Pat?
No, no issues, Mr. Chairman, they're good for the extension.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant a final subdivision approval, extension of final subdivision approval for 180 days.
Second. All in favor?
See how simple things can go when you follow directions?
It's been a pleasure working with you gentlemen. If only my clients were this simple, thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, Kinz Grant condominium, Fair Street, waiver of the site plan application. Mike?
The applicant's requesting a waiver for added parking along the emergency access adjacent to Wainwright Road and Carmel. Provide dimensions of the parking spaces, has Carmel Fire Department reviewed and commented on the submission? Will the gate include a locking device, provide details on the site plan for future clarification enforcement if needed? If a lock is installed, a combination must be given to 911 dispatch, sheriff's office, Carmel PD, ambulance, and any other agency that would need access in an emergency.
Thank you, Mike, Rich?
So I had no objection to the waiver of the site plan, 'cause this thing has been there forever, but Mike brought up a good point earlier, you know, there are turning radiuses that were not provided on any of the drawings where these spots were put in without any approval, so some additional information should probably... these spots were put in without any approval, so some additional information should probably be given on those. But otherwise than that, you know, they're looking to legalize six parking spaces that have been there forever.
And Pat?
No, no issues with this. Just reiterate the point, if they were built incorrectly not to town standards, if they don't have the proper radiuses, that should be corrected at this point in time. But they've been there forever, and there's, it's really not a concern or a zoning issue in any...
That was my question, Pat. What if this, now, Rich, maybe it's more to you. What are these parking, evidently your parking spaces went in without a permit, Pat, when?
So this came, this came to light... Well, this came to light because of the work that was being done on Fair Street. All of a sudden, that accessway was opened up legally, illegally, whatever. And Mike had an opportunity to take a hard look at what was there and realize that there were additional parking spaces, which are also in the area of an ingress and egress out onto Wainwright. So that's where this came from. So the board needs to take a hard look at these illegal parking spaces and make sure that it doesn't further impact the means of ingress and egress as a emergency basis out onto Wainwright, which traditionally has been for emergency purposes only, but was opened up as a way to alleviate traffic waiting to get out onto Fair Street from Kings Grant. And it caused a lot of consternation among... Neighbors, Kings Grant folks, people in the neighborhood, flag people, Department of Public Works, county officials, you name it. Mike, you mentioned something about the fire, has the fire department looked at this?
Has what?
Has the fire department looked at this?
I don't think so.
So, I mean, that would be my biggest concern. I mean, these are there, and presumably you've never had a fire, so it's never come up, but, I mean, I think the fire department needs to look at it to make sure that they get their apparatus through there and those spots are not obstructing.
They did look at it before they put the parking spaces, 'cause it was on the old site plan this way.
Right, but that's different.
So since it changed, that's when the question came up.
So, I can, I can address that, Mr. Chairman, if you allow.
Sure, and go back, probably half the board wasn't here when these were built.
Yep.
Go back and give us a little insight, if you allow.
We'll do, yeah. So, for the record, my name is David Cooper, I'm a partner with the law firm of Zarin and Steyman, that's here representing the Kings Grant Master Association, and with me is Adam Thurbeck from Inside Engineering, the project engineer. So Kings Grant is a longstanding residential community off of, in the area, off of Fair Street. Originally, site plan approval was granted in 1983, and then there was an amendment in 1985. Since that time, it's been in full operation, and, and the, the road onto Wainwright is an emergency access, which is gated, and I'll get to that in a second. But sometime in the 2000s, early 2000s, the community built 11 more parking spaces right by Building 11. And they never made it on to a, to a site plan. And so, now, because of the issues that were going on, because Fair Street was blocked, and I guess the residents were using, trying to use emergency access to get out, because there were times when actually they could not get out of their own driveway of the, of the community, this issue arose. With respect to the access, the, that's no longer an issue, and also, that, that gate has been locked. They're using metal ties at this point, not, not a combination lock. I think that the, the issue, we can, we can speak with the town about it, I think the concern on the Master Association's part is, they don't wanna be liable if somebody loses the, the combination 911, and they're coming, they can't get, open the gate. I think we can work that out, and I can handle with them, but we will just have to work that out, you know, with the town. But, just so the board knows, from, from an access perspective, that road is no longer being used as egress-ingress by the community. We did present, we, the, the application to the board is for a waiver under, under 60L. We did present, I think the returning radii as well that were presented, but I'll let Adam go through it.
Yeah, we, we did provide a vehicle maneuver, so this is aerial apparatus E1 fire truck, we did show it coming through. This is a current survey, done about a month ago of the existing condition, and we were able to model the maneuver making its way through the existing emergency access as was intended in 83. So there's no, there's no encumbrance to, to that, as shown by the maneuver.
That's the size of the apparatus they have now?
I'll double-check and...
Just to be sure, just...
Sure, yeah. This is one of the bigger trucks that we are even able to, to model, but I'll confirm with them that it is...
Just to be sure, I wouldn't want them to...
Yep.
Have to hit a car to get out or in or in an emergency.
And Adam, the spaces are properly paved, they're the right size, is there drainage?
They're, they're properly paved, the, they are striped, and as far as drainage goes, there is a, it does make its way into the collection system that's on-site. We'll double-check on the dimensional requirements.
It seems to me, although they're not being used for egress, or as entrance, only for emergencies, what I haven't heard is if the roads were built, if the parking spaces were built properly. I hear they were paved, but do you have your depth on any there, is it, are they built to code?
In terms of the pavement section?
Dimensional.
Dimensional, we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they were built, you know, probably almost 20 years ago, so they were probably to code back in, in...
But now's the time to bring it up.
Code's the same.
Right.
The code has been the same, yeah, okay.
Hasn't changed, it's still 10 by 20, it's been 10 by 20 for 30 years I'm here, and it's, it's, if you have a raised bumper, you could go to 18, it's, it's not gonna change, so it's, the width is the question.
What I recall, there are, there are neighbors in Kings Grant itself that don't like that parking situated there. I'm not sure who they are, but I'm pretty sure I've gotten an email from somebody saying that they were not happy with those additional spots, too, so, just something to be mindful of.
Yeah, I mean, they, they should contact the Master Association. I mean, obviously, the Master Association is who pertaining to us, but if there is an issue, they'll, they'll deal with it internally. Procedurally, if, if the, if the spots need to be brought up, brought up to code, and the next step for the board, can we, would the board still consider the waiver if we were to submit a plan which shows either them up to code as is, or if we have to do some changes?
So, so David, it depends on what it is. If it's three and a half inches on one side, that's fine, we could do that as the waiver, but if the plan is changing, we have to amend the site plan.
Right, well, there is a, there is the, the provision in the, in the code that allows, it's not a waiver, but I guess it's, no, no public hearing, but just an administrative approval.
Right, so, so the waiver of the site plan will result in a record from this meeting saying, you didn't have to do anything.
Right.
That probably goes away. You're, five years ago, five years from now, you're gonna come back and try to piece together the three additional spaces they put on the end of these spaces, there's no plan, there's no record of it. So if there's a physical change that we need to bear in mind, we would probably wanna amend the site plan. If it's just legalizing a little bit of change here and there, that's probably fine, but the point of the site plan is it leaves a trail, you know, so we can verify things in the future.
And I would not recommend waiving a public here, to be honest with you.
So for David and Adam's benefit, is there anything else that we're concerned with other than if the spaces were built to code? But that seems to be it, right?
My opinion is a lock on the gate.
Yeah.
Should be a lock on the gate. If you don't want people using it when they shouldn't be, if it's not an emergency, a lock is the best way. 911, police, sheriff, ambulance, all has the password or passcode or whatever it is, and that's all that matters. They're the only ones that should have the right or the need to go through there.
And that will also go a long way to resolving the violation that's pending in the town of Carmel Justice Court.
Right, which I think, it's been communicated to the Master Association.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And David, typically, we, I don't, I forget what you said, but zip-tying the gate together is generally not an acceptable solution. It's maybe a little more permanent than a lock, I get the point you made about the lock, but typically, it's a, it's a Knox box, there's a way to have a lock on the gate.
So, so how, how is the town dealt with the, the concern about if, if the combination is lost, or are there other examples that I can, that I can point the Master Association to, to say, hey, this is how they...
I'm sure you've come across this, so there are lots of mechanisms, so the, the emergency service vehicle can have a frequency that opens a gate that's related to the type of lock you use on the gate. So there's lots of solutions to do, it doesn't have to be a master lock with your combination on your palm, like at high school. But there's, I think if you gave it a little bit of thought, you could come back with a solution that would be acceptable to Mike and the emergency service folks.
Yeah, obviously, we, we think about it often, I just need to make sure that the client is okay with it. The, the, the issue would be what, are there, do you know if there are any types of locks that the fire department uses generally? Like, for example, other municipalities do have a...
You could put a Knox box on the post, and then have any kind of lock you want. As long as they could get in the Knox box, then they get the key and they could open it up.
Yeah.
That's another option, I mean, there's 100 options.
I think that's the easiest idea.
There's 100 options, it's just...
Or ask the fire department what they would...
Yeah, that may be the...
We offered to buy the lock. I literally, I was gonna go buy it myself, just to put a lock on there, but I, I don't wanna lock it until everybody's on the same page, that's the problem.
Okay, I, let me, let me, let me forward that on to the two Master Associations.
David, I think if you push us out two weeks, it's gonna really impact you or anybody to get these questions answered. I mean, we call in two weeks.